We ready? We'll call this meeting to order.
All rise. Oh, yes, oh, yes, this county commission meeting in Sumner County is now open pursuant to adjournment. God bless this country and this honorable commission. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Weatherford. I'm gonna ask for prayer in just a minute. Just as a reminder, this week is graduation week in Sumner County, and we want to pray for all of our graduates as their families celebrate across the county their accomplishments, but also for their safety in the days ahead. So let's lift up our graduates and their families. It's great to have Mr. Sullivan back with us and on the mend. Dan, it's good to see you again. Michelle's anniversary is tonight. Where better than to spend your anniversary than a county commission meeting? So congratulations, Ms. Schale. And Commissioner Taylor, would you pray for us tonight?
Lord, we pray that you thank you so much for this day and this time, Father. We thank you for the love and the grace you've given us and for the blessings of this county and its residents. Lord, we just ask that you let love come upon our lips. Don't let us speak anything but your will and your way. Bless this commission with your wisdom and your discernment, Father, and just let us be about you in all times. And bless these people that have come to be a part of it. Let them walk in your ways and your glory. It's in Christ's holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no sin and injustice for all.
All right, I can't see. All right, tonight you have your agenda before you. We need to make one addition from our special called Budget Meeting. It'll be, we'll put it under budget. It'll be 2105-21, number five, regarding summer learning camps. Okay? Is there a motion to approve our agenda? Make motion made by Commissioner Foster, second by Commissioner Tucker. Mr. Mansfield.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I move that we have recognition of the public after the public hearing for the goat farm rezoning. If there's no opposition to that?
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Mansfield to move the public notice before certificates of recognition?
I mean, recognition of the public after the public notice.
Gotcha, gotcha. I don't really think we need, I don't think we really need a motion or an agenda. If there's no objection, we'll just move. Does anybody object to us moving public comments to after certificates of recognition? Okay, I think we can do that with the-
After the goat farm rezoning hearing, this will be a presentation.
Gotcha, gotcha. Yes, sir, that's fine. That's fine. Yeah, we can do that. That's fine. Okay. What's that? Yeah, we're gonna, we gotta approve. Oh, we do, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Becker. Mr. Becker saved me twice tonight. Let me, let's kill that motion and second, we need to do our roll call first.
Roll calls on the board. Each commissioner, please record your presence.
Yeah, Mr. Graves is out of town. All right, you've got your agenda before you. Again, I would say we want to add 2105-21 under budget, summer learning camps. It'll be number five. Okay, and we will, without objection, we will flip. That will actually be a separate public comments. Mr. Mansfield, that will be the public comments associated with the actual zoning hearing, because we have two separate public comments on that. Yeah, I think without objection, we'll do that as well. Okay. All right, all in favor say aye? Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Your minutes are on your desk. Is there a motion to approve our minutes? Motion made by Commissioner Krueger, second by Commissioner Taylor. All in favor say aye? Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We're gonna hold our recognition of the public until after our announcements from the chair and our certificates of recognition. I would like, before we do our certificates of recognition, I would like to take just one moment and recognize Mr. Lawing. Tuesday, last Tuesday, a group of us were over at a meeting that Senator Hale called with comptroller Mum Power, who came to Sumner County to present about the American Rescue Plan and the funds that are allocated to Sumner County. But before they discussed that, he wanted to specially recognize Sumner County. Basically, this year, we were one, our audit was completed. We had a clear audit. We were one of 12 counties in the state that had a completely clear audit. And so, Mr. Lawing, we have a recognition from the comptroller's office honoring you and your staff for the work that you've done, Mr. Becker, on financial management and everyone else that's involved with our budget work. So congratulations and thank you for that work. Mr. Lawing, please pass on our congratulations and our gratitude to your staff. Commissioner Mo Taylor and I got to honor Buzz Black last week on Friday. The yearbook at Westmoreland High School was dedicated in his honor. It was a special time for Buzz. If you know Buzz, there's never a dull moment. Mr. Hyde, I heard a story that one time he walked all the way to your house to give you a personnel recognition in the rain, and then after he offered, he turned around and walked off. So Buzz is a unique part of the fabric and life of Sumner County, and it was really exciting to see the kids at Westmoreland High School honor him and recognize him. Yes, sir.
The 12 out of 95 counties, that's never happened in Sumner County.
Right. As far as we know, that's never happened before in Sumner County. So, Mr. Lawing, congratulations. Thank you, Mr. Gu. All right, your veteran service report is on your desk, and we will begin. Mr. Sullivan, you're up first. And I'll yield the floor to Mr. Sullivan.
I have a resolution recognizing May as National Children's Mental Health Awareness Month. As a former educator, before I read this, I just want to say that this past year has been very exhausting to our children, and as parents and grandparents, we need to make sure that we're taking care of our children. So I'm honored to read this tonight. Whereas addressing the complex mental health needs of children, youth, young adults, and families today is fundamental to the citizens of Sumner County, and whereas the need of comprehensive coordinated health services for children, young adults, and families place upon our community and our critical responsibility, and whereas it is appropriate that a month should be set apart each year to focus on the importance of our children's mental health and well-being, and whereas Tennessee Voices, through its unique approach to serving children and adolescents, is effectively caring for the mental health needs of children, youth, young adults, and families in our community. Now therefore be it resolved, the Sumner County Board of County Commissioners, meeting in regular session on the 17th day of May 2021, that this body does recognize May as the National Children's Mental Health Awareness Month, and urge our citizens and all agencies and organizations interested in meeting every children's mental health needs to unite in the observance of such exercises as will acquaint the people of Sumner County with the fundamental necessities of a year-round program for children and youth and adults with mental health needs and their families. Mr. Chair, I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Sullivan, second by Commissioner DeWitt. All in favor say aye? Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
I would just like to echo the words that Mr. Sullivan said. You know, it has been a tough year for all of us, right? And so, for children especially, right? If it's affecting adults, it's also affecting children. And so, I appreciate the county executives that have taken the time to make this proclamation, and just appreciate you all and your time to bring awareness to children's mental health, reducing the stigma, and ultimately continuing to make progress in the right direction. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. All right, next we have Ms. Schale.
Commissioner Stewart, do you want to come up here as well? Did you want to come up here as well? Hendersonville.
Probably not in your beach shirt, Mr. Foster. You can't.
It's coming up next. If our cheerleaders could come up here and the coaches. Y'all can just go on either side and just fill in. This is a certificate of recognition and a resolution honoring the Hendersonville High School cheerleaders and coaches. Whereas the Hendersonville High School cheerleaders, sponsored by coaches Harley Fuqua, Brittany Watson, Malik Briggs, and Mike Levin, recently made program and county history by becoming the first ever UCA 2021 national champions. And whereas the Hendersonville High School cheerleaders competed in two divisions, small varsity, traditional, and medium varsity non-tumble game day, and received first place in game day division and second place at Tennessee Extreme and third place at Space Station in the small varsity traditional division. And whereas the Hendersonville High School cheerleaders, as a team as well as individual members, have distinguished themselves by their enthusiasm and outstanding efforts. And whereas Lily Howard, Emma Kimbrough, Jaden Watts, Kristella Kabasu, Sidney McDaniel, Ashley Phillips, Brooke Haley, Olivia Kimbrough, Kaitlin Ramsey, Mary Grace Roden, Aiden Roney, Brianna Earls, Kenzie Lowry, and India Rice have practiced hard, strive for perfection, and for their outstanding efforts have brought home honor not only to themselves, but their school and this county. And I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Schale, seconded by Commissioner Becker. All in favor say aye? Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Hey, and I just want to say for these girls, this was a very trying year. We did a lot of virtual competitions, and these girls, I was in the gym with them multiple, multiple times a week in the gym when they filmed their nationals, and these girls were so impressive with their work, their dedication to the sport. It is not cheerleading what it was 10 years ago. These girls work extremely hard. So, I'm gonna let you say something to them.
First, I just want to say thank y'all for recognizing us. We're excited to be here. Like she said, it was an extremely hard season. The COVID year hit us all, and for these athletes to push through, we had virtual tryouts. We had someone from California send in videos. We had them all across, send in videos to try out. So it was a very odd season, starting out, I think in October, was our regional competition. We had fall break, choreography, and not all of them could be there with COVID contact tracing. So we're like, okay, we can manage this. We'll send videos, they'll learn virtually, and then show up at practice. And then I think we went on fall break, and we had about 10 days to go compete in Alabama. Well, as soon as we came back from fall break, we had two more COVID contact trace. We thought, sure, we can pull this out together. It'll be fine. Then three more. So it started out with Saturday practice outside in the parking lot, because we couldn't get into our gym. So we went through, changed some few things, and then all of our families and the girls and Jaden all drove down to Alabama, and we just kind of crossed our fingers, sent them out there and hoped for the best. And we were very excited to see that we walked away with first at that regionals and third in the traditional routine. And I think at that point, we all knew we could get through this, whatever the season was gonna throw at us. Little do we know, injuries, illnesses, roster changes, more contact tracing. You can't cheer at the basketball games. Now you can cheer at the basketball games, but only half your team can go to the games. It was a lot of throwing back and forth, but they bounced, and whether that was a group could practice one day and another group the next day, they did what we asked. We're so proud of them to say we got first in regionals, both in Tennessee and Kentucky, I mean Alabama. Then we went on to state. Normally, state's in December. We didn't hear from them. Then it was January. We were just crossing our fingers. People were posting on Facebook, like, please, just give us a state competition. Then we got told, hey, you get to compete in state in like two weeks. So we were like, okay, we can do this. We'll plan for Plan B if we have more virtual contact tracing. Then snow week happened. So it was like, okay, now we can't practice, but once we get back, we'll have all day Monday to practice and then video, and just hope for the best. We didn't really balk away saying that was our best performance that we could do, but that day is as good as it was gonna get. So we submitted our video. We were so excited to hear we got first in state, and that defended our two-time state title. So now we're three-peat state champions. And I think at that moment, we thought, okay, if we all stick together, we can go and take this national championship home. So we worked a little harder for two more weeks, submitted the video. It took a lot of attempts. Like she was saying, we're so glad everybody showed up in our community, and we had our admin support, our families. We could not have done it without them. And these kids, they shined out there on that mat. So we took home first for nationals in game day routine and top five in traditional, which I feel like that routine kind of got outshined, but we haven't placed top five in the nation in that small varsity since 2011. So huge accomplishments for both routines, and we are very proud of these guys for all they did. So thank y'all so much for recognizing us and celebrating this win with us.
And as they leave, let me just say, you know, there's so much conversation about what was lost over the past year, but it's nice to see, so wonderful to see a group of young people that have worked hard and have gained resilience to overcome all obstacles. So congratulations, and we're so very proud of you. Congratulations to our team.
Two more certificate of recognitions for Kiara Berry and Baker Schell. Y'all can come up here. And if you have any family with you and they want to come, they're welcome to, since there's only two of y'all. If they don't want to, that's fine too. Well, besides me. This is, I guess, honor your-
Brandon, if you come on up, it counts as celebrating your anniversary.
He took me to lunch today. All right, I'm gonna do Kiara first. This is a certificate of recognition, a resolution honoring Kiara Berry. Whereas Kiara Berry earned the most valuable athlete award for her performance in the 2021 Sumner County Track and Field Champion for the second consecutive year by earning 40 points during the competition. And whereas Kiara qualified for the State of Tennessee Track and Field Championship in the 4x200 relay. And whereas Kiara, a senior at Beach High School, showing hard work and dedication throughout her athletic career, both in track and field as well as soccer, whereas she is an inspiration to all those who know her. And whereas in addition to being a talented athlete, Kiara is a dedicated student with a promising future who has proven that hard work, persistence, and dedication are keys to success. Whereas Kiara plans to attend Tennessee Wesleyan University, where she will play soccer and participate in track and field. And I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Schale, seconded by Commissioner Foster. All in favor say aye? Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
And just a point of clarification. I think when Kiara got MVP with 40 points, which basically, if you're not a track and field person, means that she placed first in all four events that she was entered in. I'm pretty sure it was the first time in Sumner County history that that's ever happened. So it's a huge accomplishment for her. So congratulations. All right, here's a certificate of recognition, a resolution honoring Baker Schell. Whereas Baker earned a most valuable athlete award for his performance in the 2021 Sumner County Track and Field Championship for the second consecutive year by earning 36 points during the competition. And whereas Baker qualified for State of Tennessee Track and Field Championship in the 110 and 300 hurdles. Whereas Baker, a senior at Beach High School, showed hard work and dedication throughout his track and field career, being an inspiration to all those who know him and the entire community. Whereas in addition to being a talented athlete, Baker is an exceptional student with a bright future who has proven that hard work, diligence, and dedication are keys to success. Whereas Baker plans to attend the University of Alabama at Huntsville, where he will participate in track and field and study chemical engineering. And I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Schale, seconded by Commissioner Rhodes, sorry. All in favor say aye? Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
I just want to say it's an honor to represent Sumner County and Beach High School, and thank you to all the coaches, parents, God, and anyone who helped me get here.
Yeah, like Kiara said, thank you so much for this recognition. We've worked really hard the past three years, past four years, especially with losing our junior year to COVID gave us a big chance to come home and prove ourselves our final senior year. So it's been an honor.
Thank y'all, and congratulations. We're so proud of you. Commissioner Ring? Thank you. The Sumner County, all county academic team members would come up here, please? Okay, I'm gonna read a resolution for each of them, and then I'll talk about the whole thing at the end. It's a resolution honoring Chris Wright. Whereas Chris, a member of the Gallatin High School academic team, has participated in the academic team since middle school and has served as a volunteer for the Sumner County Academic League Middle School Division as a reader, scorekeeper, and room administrator. And whereas Chris scored in the top 10 in the 2021 Sumner County Invitational High School Tournament and has participated in the Tennessee Academic Coaches Association's Tennessee State Tournament. And whereas Chris scored in the top three as an individual in every tournament played this year, six total, he is Gallatin High School ambassador and plans to attend Harvard in the fall. Now therefore be it resolved by the Sumner County Board of County Commissioners, meeting in regular session on the 17th day of May, that this body hereby congratulates and commends Chris Wright for his outstanding accomplishments and wishes him a happy, successful future. I so move. Motion made by Commissioner Ring, seconded by Mr. Hyde. All in favor say aye? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Try doing the order that they're here. All right. Resolution honoring Galen Way. Is that correct? Okay, thank you. Whereas Galen, a member of the Merrill Hyde Magnet School academic team, has participated in the academic team since middle school and has served as a volunteer for the Sumner County Academic League Middle School Division as a reader, scorekeeper, and room administrator. Whereas Galen scored in the top 10 in the 2021 Sumner County Invitational High School Tournament and has participated in the Tennessee Academic Coaches Association's Tennessee State Tournament. And whereas Galen has a 4.0 average and plans to study computer science or chemistry in college and has achieved a perfect score of 36 on the ACT and actively participates in cross-country and band. Now therefore be it resolved by the Sumner County Board of County Commissioners, meeting in regular session on the 17th day of May 2021, that this body hereby congratulates and commends Galen Way for his outstanding accomplishments and wishes him a happy, successful future, and I so move. Motion made by Commissioner Ring, seconded by Mr. Hyde. All in favor say aye? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay. And next we have a resolution honoring Avery Cranford. Whereas Avery, a member of the Portland High School academic team, has participated in the academic team since middle school and has served as a volunteer for Sumner County Academic League Middle School Division as a reader and scorekeeper and room administrator. And whereas Avery scored in the top 10 in the 2021 Sumner County Invitational High School Tournament and has participated in the Tennessee Academic Coaches Association's Tennessee State Tournament. And Avery, and whereas Avery made a top 10 individual at the Sumner County Sponsored by Poncy Law Tournament, and has been accepted to attend University of South Carolina with McNair Honors Scholarship. Now therefore be it resolved by the Sumner County Board of County Commissioners, meeting in regular session on the 17th day of May 2021, that the body hereby congratulates and commends Avery Cranford for her outstanding accomplishments and wishes her a happy, successful future, and I so move. Motion made by Commissioner Ring, seconded by Mr. Hinton. All in favor say aye? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And one more, a resolution honoring Opal Flanagan. Whereas Opal, a member of the Merrill Hyde Magnet School academic team, has participated in the academic team since middle school, receiving awards for individual points and throughout middle and high school. And whereas Opal scored in the top 10 in the 2021 Sumner County Invitational High School Tournament and has participated in the Tennessee Academic Coaches Association, Tennessee State Tournament. And whereas Opal has participated in writing workshops throughout the in writing workshops throughout the country, has 4.1 average and plans to study writing and art in college and earn a PhD. And now therefore be it resolved by the Sumner County Board of County Commissioners, meeting in regular session on the 17th day of May 2021, that this body hereby congratulates and commends Opal Flanagan for her outstanding accomplishments and wishes her a happy, successful future, and I so move. Motion made by Commissioner Ring, seconded by Mr. Hyde. All in favor say aye? Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, I would like to say something. We could just put this in one resolution for all four of them, because they have a lot of the same accomplishments, but I thought it was important that they each be recognized for additional accomplishments, because these students not only do the academic team, they participate in lots of other activities at their schools as well, as well as being high achievers in lots of other areas. So I appreciate them. And if their families would like to come up here for a picture? Some of the coaches are here too. Mr. Brian Hoover from Gallatin High School, Ms. Helena Bear from Portland High School, and Ms. Kim Poncy from, I see you. Ms. Kim Poncy from Merrill Hyde, if the teachers and coaches would like to come up too. Because the coaches are integral part of this team. And I, you know, I can't swear about the other two, but I will tell you, Mr. Hoover at Gallatin is there all the time doing academic team. And he also is coaching academic teams at the two middle schools. So they're very busy. So get over here for a picture. I'm sure somebody will want to take a picture of you. Masks don't look good pictures, so if you want to take them off for the picture, you can. Thank you all. And I will say one, add one more thing. Programs like this could not happen without the teachers. There would be no programs like this. And most of the teachers who do programs like this don't get anything extra. They don't get a stipend. They don't get a stipend. They do it out of love, caring for their students. So we appreciate that. Now I'd like to call up the 2021 Gallatin High School way vets, way vets, please, to come forward with their coaches. A resolution honoring the Gallatin High School 2021 way vets. Whereas the Gallatin High School 2021 way vets dance team, sponsored by coaches Sue Luna and Shelby Luna, competed in the regional, state, and national awards levels and, excuse me. Whereas the Gallatin High School way vets accomplished 2020 mid-south regional champions in small varsity hip-hop, 2021 state champions in small varsity hip-hop, 2021 National Dance Alliance national champions, small varsity hip-hop, and 2021 National Dance Alliance and national runner-up, small varsity POM. By their outstanding efforts have brought honor upon themselves, their school in Sumner County. And whereas comprised of members, China Creighton, Aspen Carter, Livy Donahoe, Jikmir Wall, Cherish Willis, Aleah Boone, Kylie Holland, Yasmin Malone, Sophia Say, Sidney Ashabroner, Draven Beasley, Madison Evitz, Jamaria Fitz, Madeline Rooks, and Jenna Walter, have demonstrated their dedication and hard work can lead to success and through their efforts are inspiration to those around them. Now whereas be it resolved by the Sumner County Board of County Commissioners, meeting in regular session on the 17th day of May 2021, that this body does hereby congratulate Gallatin High School 2020-2021 way vets, and I do hereby make that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Ring, seconded by Commissioner Stewart. All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Just to echo a little bit of what Hendersonville's cheer team has said, you name it, it happened to us this year. So I mean, COVID, there was a whole snow week. And then I think the day that we were going to have our finals nationals practice was when we had severe weather and sent school home early. So I think we're prepared for anything in the future, not to just brag on these girls for their athletic abilities, but also just who they are as individuals. I think one of our favorite parts every year is when we have tryouts and we ask for their teacher recommendations, just hearing who they are actually in their student body, in their classes, and just the other events that they're involved in in school and around campus and how they truly are leaders among those around them. So it speaks a lot for them that they can balance jobs, lots of other extracurricular activities as well, and still be just as dedicated as they are to their sport. So we have some amazing young ladies and I wouldn't trade this group for everything. So very proud of them and all of their accomplishments this year. So thank you again for recognizing us.
There's three resolutions, one for you, one for the school.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Congratulations, ladies. Thank you so much. Mr. Hinton?
This is, this is the first time I've ever done one this way, but we've got certificates for people who participated, volunteered, and helped in the storm. We have 15 certificates. Now these are, there was no way to put together enough certificates for the people that had a hands-on, you can ask Mr. Wright, he can tell you all the scrambling that was going on when the storm come through up at Cook Road of, east of Portland. And it was, if you've never seen it, it's an interesting tour to go through. It beat all the siding off the houses, all the hailstorms did. It blow doors open and put hail inside of people's houses. And everything up through there looked like it'd been sandblasted. The trees were laying in rows down through the woods. It was a pretty frightening time. But like I mentioned before, there's a lot of people to thank, but the best thanks that that community ought to have is to the good Lord because nobody got hurt. Nobody got hurt. And it destroyed, it was a phenomenal destruction path that that storm took down through there. So what we have attempted to do, and this is a dangerous task because there's no way to mention everybody that come by and laid hands on stuff and helped somebody, but we've made an attempt at this. So these certificates all read the same and they're relatively brief. So I'm going to read off the people, the groups that contributed to this. Oak Grove Volunteer Fire Department, Portland Chamber of Commerce, the Portland Chamber of Commerce took the organization task in hand. They recruited volunteers, they worked with the First Baptist Church, and I'll get to them in a minute. First Baptist Church furnished food, which is always important when you've got a crowd. But the Chamber of Commerce helped to recruit people, volunteers, and really stepped in and took advantage of the situation. City of Portland sent a brush truck. Now, this is Sumner County's responsibility. So these cities, City of Portland, City of Westmoreland, and the City of Gallatin, all three sent brush trucks up there. Now, the brush, the brush is a hard, slow task to get rid of. And I'll get to a fellow down here in a minute that made that a little better for us. First Baptist of Portland furnished food on the cleanup day. They come out with, you could have had all the pizzas you wanted that day. We had more pizzas than they had volunteers. But anyway, Mitchell General Baptist Church sent a van to haul the workers from one site to another and from one dumpster to another. John Alley is the person's name who provided a burn site on his farm over there. And it was within seeing distance of the storm. So instead of having to load all those brush trucks and bring them back to Gallatin to dump them and then turn around and go back, they could go down the road about a quarter of a mile and dump. And the Sumner County Highway Department had somebody up there burning the pile. So when they finally got it all moved, it was all burned away. Antioch Baptist Church, they kind of served as the focal point. That's where everybody gathered in their parking lot and they furnished everything they could. Generation Church in Portland sent people there. Jackson Lawn Care. Now I don't know how I'm going to find him because he's out of Scottsville, Kentucky, but we'll figure out how to get this to him if we can. Randy Baker Construction. And of course, of course, the Sheriff's Department showed up. And I was reluctant to mention entities because some of these entities are merely doing their job. But just doing your job and doing it well is worth some commendation. So the Sheriff's Department, the EMA, and the EMAS all contributed to this. And it worked out, it worked out really good. It was amazing to go over there early on during the storm and go back three or four days later and see the difference that had been made. I mean, these people were, that whole community was just about blown away. And within four or five days, all except a few uprooted trees back off the highway up there, all the houses were taken care of, yards were cleaned up. And so we're going to distribute these, we're going to deliver these, and I'm going to get some help from them. And by the way, we were, if you was where the storm was, behind a certain house, you would have been in the first, second district. If you was at the house, you'd have been in the second district. So it affected both the first and second district. And we'll send some of these certificates to Westmoreland et cetera by their commissioners. So I so move for the passage of them.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Hinton, seconded by Commissioner Mo Taylor. All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Along those lines, as we prepare to move on, I just want to, wasn't it great tonight after 14 months of living through and dealing with COVID? Wasn't it great to honor a whole bunch of people from across the county and just have a full chamber and be able to do the work of the people? So really thankful to our Sheriff's Department, EMA, EMS, everyone else that's worked so hard in the past year to keep us safe. So thank y'all. Along those lines, I meant to read this earlier. We had a thank you note from Mr. Widener and his family. Said, Mayor Holt, staff, and county commissioners, thank you for everything that you have done during my mom's journey. It has been an emotional roller coaster with many highs and lows. Your words, thoughts, and prayers were comforting. The plant is beautiful. We will take care of it in our home as my mom loved to care for plants in her home. Thank you, Ken and Donna Widener. So Mr. Widener passed on his thanks for the plant that we sent. And I'll let him know that we read the note in front of the entire chamber. All right, I don't see, do we have anyone that signed up or wishes to speak on an agenda item other than the zoning? The Goat Farm is the zoning. There's a separate sign up for it. Right, we will do that, ma'am, in just a minute. This is for anything except for that. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Anyone wish to speak on anything other than the Goat Farm rezoning? Okay. See no public comments? We will move forward now to our public notice. And Mr. Kemp, do I call it to order first? Yeah. We'll call the zoning to order. Mr. Kemp, would you like to read the notice?
The Sumner County Board of County Commissioners will hold a public hearing on May 17, 2021 in the Bethel Brown Commission Chambers in Sumner County, in the Sumner County Administration Building. The Goat Farm Plan Unit Development Rezoning and Concept Plan. Stratos Development MC2 Group, represented by Los Design in the Sixth Commission District, represented by Luke Tinsley and Deanne Dewitt, applicant is seeking to rezone from rural residential to planned unit development in order to construct and operate an indoor sports facility and associated services and uses, as depicted upon the submitted concept plan. Subject property is located on Shoot Lane, Hendersonville, Tennessee. Is Tax Map 146, parcel 69.01, contains 28.65 acres and is zoned rural residential. The Sumner County Planning Commission forwarded a positive recommendation with conditions related to the items on March 23, 2021. Anyone having interest concerning this request is invited to attend the meeting.
Okay. Would anyone wish to sign up to speak? Ma'am, I think you wanted to add your name if you would like to come sign up. And while she's doing that, I believe we may have anyone else that would like to sign up to speak, if you would like to come forward. And while they are coming forward, I believe that we may have, with that objection, we may have a presentation. Is that correct?
We don't know for certain.
Okay. I'm not seeing a presentation. So we're going to move forward with public comments. All right, as we're getting the last person signed in, I will remind everyone that you will have five minutes to speak. We ask that all comments be addressed to the chair and that we observe the rules of public decorum in Sumner County, which is to limit your comments to a topic on the agenda, in this case, the rezoning of the 28 acres of land, as read by Mr. Kemp, and to not make derogatory comments about a citizen, an institution, or entity in Sumner County. Thank you, Mr. Weatherford. I have Scott A. Smith from 108 Beacon Light Cove, I believe, in Hendersonville. Mr. Smith, you will have five minutes. As soon as you begin speaking, the timer will be on that TV in front of you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
My name is Scott Smith, and I want to thank everyone for the opportunity to speak tonight. I represent a Facebook group of over 1,200, almost 1,200 people, and over 500 who have recently signed a petition in support of the Sumner Ice Center at the Goat Farm. My family and I moved to Sumner County nine years ago. My boys were just four and six years old at that time. They grew up here playing baseball and ice hockey in middle Tennessee. They love both sports. With those two sports, we've witnessed growth in that nine-year period, particularly with regard to travel baseball and travel hockey. We've also seen cities, large and small, across the US, like Branson, Missouri, Hoover, Alabama, Sandusky, Ohio, Westfield, Indiana, just to name a very few, build indoor sports facilities and outdoor sports facilities to attract youth sports tournaments to capitalize on youth sports tourism, which is the strategy of driving business to local hotels and restaurants by hosting tournaments. In fact, the term "tournication" has been coined in the last few years to describe families like mine, crazy families like mine, who actually plan their vacations around their youth sports tournaments for their kids. It's become a $17 billion industry. In middle Tennessee, my family has felt this growth in youth sports most directly with hockey. We've seen more and more players packed into the three ice rinks in Nashville, more and more teams, and we hear more and more stories about people driving in traffic for long periods of time from Sumner County and other counties just to play hockey and spend money in Nashville. It's amazing to me that an area that's home to one of the best and most respected NHL franchises in North America has three ice rinks. The next closest NHL city has 12. But what my family has been feeling and seeing about hockey is also supported by facts. According to USA Hockey, which is the governing body over adult and youth hockey in the United States, in the past 10 years, Tennessee is the fastest-growing state in terms of hockey participants. The fastest-growing state. And despite the rapid growth, it remains the state with one of the highest growth potentials to further grow relative to other states. Tennessee, despite the growth, could triple its memberships in USA Hockey in the coming years and still not quite reach the average penetration rate of other states in the US. So you've got huge growth and you've got huge growth potential. And those two things combined, or a term in marketing we used to use as pent-up demand. There's pent-up demand for more ice rinks in the middle Tennessee area. So why Sumner County? Sumner County is the outdoor sports mecca. Our parks are filled with baseball players, softball players, soccer players, football, rugby, lacrosse, tennis. We've got golf courses. We have a lake with fishing tournaments and other water sports. We're already doing the tournication for the summer months, right? We've already got that down. Where the opportunity is for our county is in the winter months with indoor sports, indoor sports tourism. We lack that. That's white space for us. It's a huge opportunity. We also have a huge installed base of inline hockey players that use roller blades and play hockey that way in Hendersonville with two rinks. But unfortunately today, those players trade up to ice hockey and they trade up by spending all their money in Davidson County. We literally give birth to hockey players with our inline rinks and then we outsource them to Nashville so they can reap all their rewards. Let's keep that investment in our county. Let's keep that economic impact from youth sports tournaments in the winter months helping our local hotels. To sum it up, I urge you to support the rezoning for Sumner County at the Goat Farm, not only for our residents here today that play hockey and support it, but for the economic impact as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Carson Corley. Carson is from 7201 Charlotte Pike, Nashville, Tennessee. Mr. Corley, you'll have five minutes once you begin speaking.
All right. My name is Carson Corley. I'm the head coach of the Hendersonville Ice Hockey Varsity Commandos. It's truly an honor to be standing up here before y'all today. Scott touched on a lot of great points in regards to the financial impact and the economic impact that this rink could have on this community. But I'm so proud to be up here representing the city that I was born and raised in, in the sport that I love dearly. So that's why I didn't have a speech prepared because I'm so passionate about this city and so passionate about this sport. But I want to talk about the impact that the game has on our youth. I started playing hockey right before the old Saunders Ferry rinks were torn down back in 2005 and right when the Veterans Park rinks were installed. And immediately I fell in love with I fell in love with the game. And the game taught me so many great life lessons. I truly believe that hockey is the, is the best metaphor for life in terms of the ups and downs that you experience, learning how to work together as a team to achieve the ultimate goal. And so, and right, the second I graduated high school playing for HHS, I knew I wanted to give back and coach. I never thought it would be this soon, being a, being a 26-year-old kid, in my eyes, coaching a group of young men and women. It's truly a blessing, and I don't take it for granted. But what this sport, especially here in the county that I love, just to have greater access for these kids to experience this game, to really take in those life lessons that they will learn by playing this game, truly goes beyond words, in my opinion. I'm just so, so excited that we're at this point. I'm just, I truly believe this is the greatest game in the whole world. So I'm in full support of the rezoning. I hope all of you guys will consider that as well, to give the youth, the next generation, the opportunity that I had. I wouldn't be the man I am today without the support of ice hockey. So please consider the rezoning. It's going to make a great impact on this city. So thank you so much for your time. I really do appreciate it.
Thank you, Coach Corley. Matt Grossland is from 638 Bonita Park Parkway, Hendersonville, Tennessee. Mr. Grossland, you'll have five minutes once you start speaking.
Thank you. My name is Matt Gross. I'm a local attorney. I live in Hendersonville, Tennessee. It's ironic that I'm here advocating for a ice hockey rink when the Predators are playing their first playoff game right now, but to me, it's worth the time. It's definitely worth the time, because as a parent of a nine-year-old who's been in travel hockey now for three years, I can personally attest not only to the amount of expenses that I have given to economies all over the country, to economies outside of this county, but also to my time and to the efforts that it takes to achieve that. I would love to see all that money come back. I spend about $1,000, $1,500 every time we go to a tournament. That money, if you've ever been to a travel hockey tournament, one thing you know is that there are age groups, several age groups, 6U, 8U, 10U, 12U, 16U, 14U, 18U. Every one of these age groups usually has anywhere between 6 and 20 teams in a tournament. Each team has 15 players. Their families all come. These teams come from all over the country. They bring all their money to those tournaments, and they spend that kind of money in that location, on restaurants, on hotels, on bars, for some of the nighttime activities, for gas, for equipment. Every year, I replace my son's hockey equipment twice, because he's a goalie and a player. So played against sports has been, has been, the local played against sports has been sort of my haven, but I spend, in fact, to buy anything brand-new, I'd spend $400 or $500 per piece of gear, and I've spent that in Davidson County, down in Franklin, online. That money's not staying here. It's, you know, Scott did a fantastic job saying a lot of the stuff that I wanted to say. I mean, he certainly did a better job than I, than I could have. But I would like to point out that our youth hockey programs, they're not just youth hockey programs, they're youth hockey programs that have been competitive nationally. In 2019, our 6U inline hat-tricks team won the Nationals down in Tampa. My son was on that team. This past year, at the Chipotle Tournament in Dallas, where, for example, the 14U had 36 teams from all over the country just in that age group, our 19U Nashville Junior Predators Women's Team placed second, which is an amazing, amazing accomplishment for such a small market. The Nashville Junior Predators Teams has, have won championships all over the country at all different age groups in the last 10 and 12 years, so they represent. Now, if you think about, like Scott said, the nearest market has, has 12 ice rinks. Chicago has 36 youth hockey teams, just in youth. In the Tampa area, in a 13-mile radius, there are eight, there are eight ice rinks for eight youth teams and countless adult leagues. We have three. Right now, our wait list for the, for the adult hockey leagues, if you're trying to get just in the lowest league, the wait list is almost 600 players. These are people who wish they could come and spend money at a rink and buy food while they're there and come and play and spend money, but they can't, because they can't get on a team, because there's no ice. Half the reason we have fewer travel teams and youth hockey teams than we'd like to have is because there's just not enough ice for them. And if you ever go down to a House League Day on a weekend during the school year, at least in a non-pandemic era, area, it's, it's just packed full of people, and they're from all over the state. People come down from Bowling Green to play here. They come from Clarksville. We have someone out in, I forget the name now, but it's far west Tennessee. He travels two and a half hours each way to bring his son to play hockey in Nashville. There is a whole market on the north side of Nashville that is not being served, and there's a whole market in Kentucky that's not being served, and they're coming down to Davidson County, and if we put one here, they're going to be coming down here. That's all money. That's all business for us. That's recognition, and that will also help us get other tournaments here, and that, all that's going to do is bring good, good revenue to the county. One other point I wanted to make, I think I've gotten through most of it. Our teams are represented, a lot of these teams are represented by Sumner County players. When I travel, I travel about an hour and 10 minutes each way three times a week for my son's travel, travel hockey team, and I have been doing that for the last four years. I would much rather do that here, and I think all the parents who live here would much rather do it here, too. So I will, I thank you for your time, and I will hope that you all vote in support for this. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Grossland. Rachel Autry, 152 Vaughan Street in Gallatin. Ms. Autry, when you begin speaking, you'll have, you can come on up. You'll have five minutes, and there's a timer up there on the television set, the monitor that you'll be able to watch.
I timed it, because it's written out.
Okay.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. I am a resident of 152 Vaughan Street. My property backs directly up to this development. I am a resident of Hendersonville. We have safety concerns with the connectivity portion of this project, and additionally want to make sure the privacy of our home is maintained in a safe and cohesive manner through extensive buffers, given the direct location of our residence. While I'm not opposed to the idea of the Ice Center, which actually was in the works with the city of Hendersonville first, and would have eliminated the idea of TIF financing, residential development, and building in people's backyards, I am opposed to having centers, a center with ice rinks, event centers, hotels, restaurants, bars, music, and high-density housing directly in my backyard, across from an elementary school, and sandwiched between a city that gets zero finance, financial benefit from this project. While I understand this meeting is focused only on the county portion of this development, let's be realistic when saying that. The ice rink and event centers are the driving force for the city portion of this project, and without the ice rinks, would the other development even be necessary? I am proposing that Green Lee is a much more suitable location for this project. Should this rezoning be approved, I would like to extend my concern regarding Vaughan Street, the Vaughan Street connection. After the planning meeting back in March, I was able to continue speaking on my concerns with several commissioners. It was in that conversation, they stated that the sole purpose for connectivity within this development was for emergency service access and not connectivity of cars or pedestrians. In looking at option B on the plan that was recommended by the planning committee, it has come to my attention that option B states pedestrian connectivity with emergency-only vehicle crash gate. Does this mean the pedestrian connectivity will be gated and locked? Is it necessary to even have pedestrian connectivity as there is a pathway through the perimeter of the Hunt Club that pedestrians can access to the Goat Farm? And why does this pedestrian connectivity need to go directly through the neighborhood? In a meeting that several homeowners had had with the representative of the developer, it was stated that we, as homeowners, wanted the connectivity, and that is why the plan includes this. The issue that I have with this is that in a survey conducted by our HOA, 52% of the 136 households responded saying that they were not even in favor of this development, and 92 responded specifically mentioned opposition to the Vaughan Street connection with additional traffic as a concern. So from those survey results, I'm not quite sure where they are getting the information that we, as homeowners, wanted this connectivity. For the safety of our neighborhood, in addition to the risk of the potential property value decreasing, I am asking that, one, the crash gate coincide with the current aesthetics of the neighborhood, and, two, the pedestrian connectivity be completely eliminated. By having the pedestrian walkway available, it poses the threat, not a what-if, that visitors will park in our subdivision and walk to the entertainment group assembly venue. Pedestrian traffic on Vaughan Street would provide additional visibility to our neighborhood. There is already an existing issue with car break-ins in our area. With the Goat Farm slated to be an area destination, we wish to not provide easy access to individuals who may perpetrate those activities. We understand the safety measures that must be taken for the connectivity of our neighborhood, but don't understand how pedestrian traffic plays a role in assisting that measure. Secondly, it has come to the attention of several homeowners that the proposed buffering plan that Stratus Development presented at the March 23rd meeting was misleading and not indicative of the planning regulations put in place by the county. It is my understanding that the developers are required at a minimum to provide a 35-foot buffer within our property line. Stratus Development stated in their presentation that they have been in negotiations with our HOA concerning permission to plant over half of the required buffer on our yard. There were multiple incorrect and misleading statements made by Stratus concerning their negotiations with our HOA. And what's even more concerning is that the Planning Commission approved this plan based on this misinformation. It is not the responsibility of us as homeowners to sacrifice so much of our investments. What is the use of having codes when developers can basically construct their own guidelines as they see necessary? I am pleading, as a resident, to require the developers of the Goat Farm, if, if, to provide the required 35-foot buffer yard on the property. I am asking that you sustain to the codes in which your board has been appointed to endorse and provide. I thank you for your time, and I'm eager to come to a solution that does not require homeowners to forfeit property, privacy, and safety.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Autry. Mr. Ryan Van Nook. Mr. Van Nook, you'll have five minutes once you begin speaking.
My name is Ryan Van Nook. I live at 115 Speerance, Gallatin, Tennessee, in the Hunt Club neighborhood. I thought the lady before me said it quite well, so I think I'll second everything she said and just add a few more comments. I have two boys. One of them goes to Jack Anderson Elementary. Another one will go there in about a year, and I have another boy on the way, so eventually he'll be there if all goes well. So in addition to what she said, I think it's important to point out, we're not just talking about an ice rink. We're talking about bars, restaurants, high-density housing, a hotel, and a number of different things. So please consider the following. An estimated 1.2 million visitors to the property, according to the developer, per year. Property sandwiched between a school and two neighborhoods. This type of development does not belong at this location in our community. More visitors equal more crime and traffic that cannot be supported. Also, consider the 35-foot easement on the east property line being reduced to 19 feet, where the developer intends to blast dynamite. The foundation of my home is 125 feet from that property line, plus the 19 feet equals 144 feet to dynamite being blasted. Many of my neighbors' homes are much closer to that property line. The 35-foot easement standards were set there for a reason. Just because this developer has money does not mean that they should be able to break these rules that were set. The Vaughan Road connection to the commercial property through the Hunt Club neighborhood is completely unnecessary and only negatively impacts the Hunt Club neighborhood. Our children play free in this neighborhood, and the only traffic in the neighborhood are the neighbors. This road connection will only subject our children to transient traffic. Please also consider, a poll was conducted by our HOA and Gertner, where a majority of the Hunt Club residents voted that they were not in favor, in support of the Goat Farm development. Also, there is a petition online with over 500 signatures opposed to it. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Van Nook, and congratulations on the third son on the way.
Thank you.
Alex Spradling. Mr. Spradling, you will have five minutes when you begin speaking, and it'll, the timer's up on the monitor up there.
Yes, sir. Thank you. So, thank you guys for having me. I didn't give a speech. I didn't come here with the intention of speaking tonight, but compelled me to go ahead and speak on behalf. I live right beside Rachel at 107 NASCAR Court in Gallatin, but I know it's probably going to come or not. Am I against the ice rink? Not necessarily. You guys are going to hate me, but I'm a capitalist fan. Don't like the Preds too much, but, so if that goes in, I can't stop that. It's beyond my control. What I'm against is any kind of access. So let me backtrack real quick, so I have a leg to stand on. I spent my entire life as an adult in public service, four years as a instrument fire team leader for 101st Airborne for OAF 4 and 6, and since then, as a law enforcement officer for Washington, DC for seven years, Metropolitan Nashville for two years, and now currently Gallatin Police. So I do, I do have to lay this down when it comes to what kind of problems this will, with, what this will bring to our community. With this hotel and transient locations, so next to the school, with this becomes crime and traffic, which I don't believe that our infrastructure can currently handle with calls for service and whatnot. I am adamantly against the, any kind of access from Vaughan to the Hunt Club. There's no need for it. There's plenty of entrances from Nashville Pike and Shoot Lane that would be there. I, as a law enforcement officer, would not choose to run license-honored to an emergency through a neighborhood. I think one of the reasons why they said they wanted that there was a, possible bombs would be at the other entrances. If you don't think a guy would take the time to plant bombs at those entrances and not the emergency crash gate, you're sadly mistaken. Like I said, I don't really have too much to talk about. I just want to get here and vent a little bit and say, I'm not against it completely, but if you guys do go for it, do not, do not connect those two communities. So that's all I got. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Spradling. Wayne, I think it's Walrend, Walrend? I apologize if I mispronounced your name. 159 Compton Street, Gallatin, Tennessee. And sir, you'll have five minutes once you begin speaking, and the timer is on the monitor.
Commissioners, neighbors, ladies and gentlemen, my home is one of my largest investments, and it's, I think most of us would agree, it's our castle, and I keep hearing people talk about money, keeping money in the state, sports. Sports is kind of on a decline. People are not traveling as much. My concern is also safety, but I think that the reason I grew up here and character of the area and community in which you live is you hope it's consistent. We all hope that our kids have a better place to grow up than what we did, and we want there to be a continuity, a continuity of what they experience growing up. The character of the county can be drastically changed, and with Nashville the way it is now and our county, it's, all the locals have spilled over to the outlying counties to get away from the, the interurbia that's grown within Nashville, and so most of us rural folks that grew up, I grew up in Goodlandsville, we end up moving farther out. This is in my backyard. I like sports, don't have a problem with that, but I think it's the wrong place. The creek is pushing everything back towards our property. I've done a lot of home development before. I've built homes. I kind of know how this process goes. It's A, B, or C, and I've told my neighbors. If you don't have the Goat Farm, you could have apartments, or C, it could be a pasture forever, which that isn't going to happen. So I look at it as, that's okay, but I really do not want any access. My property and Rachel's property, that Vaughan dead ends right there. I've got a historic wall that I've restored that was beautiful. It was about 65% complete. I went in with my own labor and back, and redid all of it, put it back like it looked back in the 1800s. It dates back late 1790s to the Fairview Plantation. It's just, I, I just love Sumner County. I love the character of it. I want my son to grow up here, just close as what it was to when I grew up. I don't expect it to remain the same forever. Other than being at the wrong place, the safety and traffic, as was pointed out, that's a big concern, because it's just, there are six point, and I find this hard to believe, 6.1 children per household in our neighborhood. I think there's a lot of, let's say, older kids who have gone back home. I don't know how there's 6.1, but that was quoted at one of the HOA meetings. The other issue is alcohol, and my fear is later. At Tennessee law states, you can't have alcohol. At Tennessee law states, you can't have alcoholic beverages served within 500 feet of a school. That skating rink is. I know the county commissioners, because of money, at some point, that character value that I hold dear is going to be dissipated by saying, well, we're going to pass a waiver. I think that could happen. I'm putting that on your hearts, and I'm going to pray about it. I hope it doesn't. Because that particular sport, when you add alcohol to it, is, in my opinion, not a good mix for the character of the county. Lastly, if this fails, let's say there's economic collapse, and I'm not saying I'm a pessimist, I'm a realist. It's like, just like being a Boy Scout, I don't, I hope for the best, but you need to be prepared for the worst. If this thing fails, that property is going to lay vacant with all this building and resources just sitting there, and that's going to be in my backyard. And if it does fail in the middle of this, because a lot of people are expecting a collapse before this is done, the whole thing may be moot anyway. But my last concern is that it could be turned into an evergreen processing center. They could be shipping people and putting them in our backyard. It could just sit vacant like some of the malls over in Mount Juliet that have just been vagrant, places for vagrants to hang out. So I'm trying to point out the complete picture of what this could turn into. So that's all I have to say about it, but I just wanted to lay that on your hearts and let you vote accordingly.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right. We'll call the public meeting to, excuse me, to a close. Is there a motion that we approve the zoning resolution? Motion made by Commissioner Goode. Is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Commissioner Rhodes. Mr. Mansfield.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I guess I appreciate the coach from Hendersonville and his enthusiasm for hockey, but having played football at Hendersonville, I have to disagree with what's the best sport, and I think it's football, so no offense to the coach. But just something that troubled me a little earlier this evening, I get notification from citizens and not seeing any kind of presentation here about the goat farm, also knowing that actual links to documents weren't sent to commissioners who didn't necessarily have access to the Google Drive. I'm confused on how there's a press conference tomorrow basically celebrating the passing of this tonight, when we've not even discussed it and voted on it. So with that, I mean, it seems almost like...
Mr. Mansfield, if I could interrupt you just for a second, and pardon me, and we'll come back to your comments in just a second. I saw your email asking about that, and so I reached out to Barry and Tourism and asked him what happened, and he said that Mr. Kane reached out to him to see if they could do the meeting there. So I asked Mr. Gomendon, who is Chair of the Tourism Board, he had no idea about it. So I understand your question. I reached out to our Tourism Director who supervises that site, and he basically said that they, they reached out to him because it's closest to the development. So there's not anything, I don't think most of the commissioners knew about it until it came out on email.
Well, I mean, I just find it interesting that Penalty Box Radio, I guess some kind of sports Facebook thing somebody sent me, talks about, you know, this is happening in Sumner County, and there is an announcement that, you know, the Sumner County Mayor, the President, President, Pedders President, Hendersonville Mayor, Gallatin Mayor, Stratus Development Partner, and longtime president, season ticket owners, two citizens, are going to be there tomorrow on something we never even discussed or voted on, and we're already running victory lapses. And I mean, to me, that just seems like there's a blatant violation of sunshine laws.
Well, I think, I'm going to disagree with you there, Mr. Mansfield, and you're out of order on that comment, because unless you have evidence that commissioners have talked and made, that's a sunshine law violation. What you're talking about is a business that has the freedom to do whatever they want. I guess if this fails tonight, they won't have the meeting. That would be my call on it. But I don't think, you're out of order unless you have some kind of evidence that you'd like to prove that, or provide that there's some kind of conspiracy of commissioners meeting ahead of time to discuss voting on this.
That's fine. I'll move on from that, Mr. Chairman. So just making my objection to, objection to that and calling that into question, which kind of just kind of sours it for me a little bit, just how, with his announcement coming on what could be good news, I think that cast a little bit of a doubt unnecessarily. So I'm really disappointed in how that's shaken out. You know, at first glance, when I think about an ice center, I agree, and I think a lot of people agree, that additional tax dollars coming into the county with sales tax, property tax is a great thing, just like the gentleman spoke about earlier tonight. I know Hendersonville tried to do an ice center and failed for political reasons, but, you know, an ice center within itself is great in any kind of commercial endeavor, because it doesn't put a strain on police or fire, for the most part, or schools, which is great. But what I've heard from a majority of citizens is, is again, they like the idea of an ice center in of itself for tax revenue and potential for that. But I also have heard, because this is the Goat Farm project, and as a citizen said tonight, it's, you know, we're, we're not just talking about ice hockey, we're talking about the goat farm, because that's what's on the agenda. Citizens are opposed to any residential phases as a part of this project, and if we approve this, this project, residential, high-density residential is coming, both on the southern, southern portion of this and the Avondale Access area, as well as in the Gallatin portion of the city. And so the third thing citizens have pretty much come to consensus on, in a lot of ways, especially the, obviously, the people who live in the back area of this, they disagree with the proposed location. They think it's better suited off Greenlee Boulevard or elsewhere on Gallatin Road, and I couldn't agree with citizens more about that personally. In the last month, we were talking about master planning in our county and we, having the GNRC help us plan how we want to grow. So when you're talking about that and you're talking about the Goat Farm project and how it's going to affect residential growth, it's important to talk about that as part of this. Again, I've talked to Hendersonville leaders who are on the record as fully supportive of the ice rink, and as well as Gallatin leaders, fully supportive of the ice rink facility. However, I've already, these elected officials I've talked to in Hendersonville are also fully opposed to any form of residential as a part of the Gallatin portion, which they can't control, and a part of the Hendersonville portion that is a third southern access. And the Economic Community Developer Development Director for Gallatin accidentally showed a slide back in January of the southern portion of this that is intended to be a part of a three-pronged TIF approach for the Gallatin portion, for the county portion, as well as the Hendersonville portion at Avondale Access, and that portion being high-density residential. And I know, so I'm looking at this comprehensively, that kind of throws a monkey wrench in things. It's, you know, people are asking, a citizen had asked, you know, since when does an ice rink need a marina, restaurants, a hotel, four-story buildings of short-term rentals and high-density residential for kids to play hockey? Well, the answer is they don't. You know, an ice center should stand on its own merit, and if you need residential, if you need foot traffic, Greenlee Boulevard is a great place for it. You've got tons of apartments at Gallatin that's approved, and you also have a lot of commercial space over there. I drive past that road frequently. You know, and I asked myself and I asked some city leaders, why, why is a TIF supposedly needed? Why was Gallatin positioning for a TIF? Or why was the developer positioning for a TIF or an ice center as a part of this project? And while I think it's easy to say that you could rationalize a TIF for infrastructure for something like this that might offset tax dollars in order to benefit the community and bring things in, I understand the argument can be made for that. There's no reason to have residential as part of any of these processes. And the conclusion was, it's just, when you ask why is there residential, it's just easy money for the developer, and it's easy to sell, you know, and, you know, these planners and developers and people don't have to deal with everyday traffic and have to deal with the foot traffic and the noise pollution and the road traffic and the potential of crime and all the things with variance violations, according to what citizens are saying here tonight, they've gone to the Planning Commission. And so it seems a little bit careless and callous, in my opinion, and that's just my opinion, on moving forward with any kind of residential component. And so, I mean, the question's asked, is this about an ice rink or is it about residential? So hearing the Hunt Club people talking about the access gate was a little bit concerning, or, and I can understand the concerns, I'd hope that if this did move forward tonight, that those people would, you'd consider removing any kind of access to the Hunt Club to respect these citizens and respect their privacy and property values, because, you know, this backs up to mechanized units and air conditioning and cooling units and trashcans and all these things in these people's backyards. And, you know, I received a lot of emails from citizens and comments that were opposed to it in their backyards as well, and these people speaking tonight. One thing that was mentioned was about schools, and again, looking at this from a master planning standpoint, from the goat farm, and it's, it is a three-phase project planned for with high-density residential down Avondale, is Station Camp, excuse me, Jack Anderson Elementary was already at 97.4% capacity two years ago, 2019. So, and I don't know what it is now. And Station Camp Elementary is at 94.9, Station Camp Middle is 107.1% core capacity, Station Camp High was at 78.5% core capacity. So when you're talking about more high-density residential, I don't see any plans in this about how this growth is going to pay for itself in far as capital needs for schools and offsetting it. That's a problem. And so it's not just about an ice rink, it's about development. So there's something that one of my constituents said at a Planning Commission meeting back in the fall, when something was going to come in their backyard and they were opposed to it, and it really stuck out to me, because he said he understood how the county or city governments like property taxes, something coming in with more density, because you're going to get more property taxes for it, and that county governments and city governments like having more of that money. But he asked a question, you know, doesn't the county want more happy residents? And who value the, the quality of life over quantity of life? And I thought that was just a remarkable statement on thinking about other people and looking at this project overall and looking at the location and hearing citizens' feedback. Again, they love the idea of an ice rink, but they're not happy about the location of where it is, and to me, I think it's a terrible location, as well, looking at everything in the footprint. So, you know, what I would like to do, Mr. Chairman, is I would move to defer this for 60 or 90 days and send it back to the Planning Commission to, one, make sure the needs of these citizens can be addressed. From what they're saying, it seems like false information was given to the Planning Commission that we're discovering tonight, and have an opportunity for that to, to be worked out. So my amendment is to defer this for 60 to 90 days and send it back to planning until all phases of this can be kind of talked about and brought forward soon.
Mr. Mansfield, did you say defer or refer?
Defer.
Defer, okay.
Yes, sir.
Motion made by Commissioner Mansfield, second by Commissioner Taylor. Defer requires a two-thirds majority, 16 votes, and there's no debate, so a yes vote for defer will...
There's debate on defer.
Okay. Are you wanting to, okay, this is our rule of conduct. You want to be able to debate it?
I don't want to, I don't want to keep somebody from having the opportunity to debate it, and so that's why I did defer instead of refer.
That's really true, but it's defer in our rules.
Okay, so...
I defer for 60 to 90 days, so that's technically what my amendment is.
Next 13, just a minute.
Okay. Majority, defer, that's what you want, Mr. Mansfield, majority with debate, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we've got defers on the table. A yes vote is to defer this back to planning for 60 to 90 days to bring back. A no vote is to continue discussion on the motion. Does anyone wish, Commissioner Taylor, you're in the queue, do you want to speak on the, on this motion? Or are you waiting on the main motion?
I'll wait on the main.
Okay. Mr. Becker, main motion of this one?
I'll wait.
Okay. Mr. Goode?
I would encourage a no vote to continue this. It has already been through planning. Josh has given the green light on it. I talked to him again today by text. He did that as well. I think Ms. Denon's aware of some of the changes that were mentioned, and Gallatin, other, other elected officials have been mentioned. It did pass Gallatin by unanimous vote, and I don't know who all the people are, was referred to in Hendersonville that's against it, because I've talked to elected officials there that are 100% for it. So I would say a no vote, and let's go forward.
Okay.
Point of clarification.
Yes, sir.
I didn't say that the city of Hendersonville is against the entire project. I said they're opposed to high-density residential, but they are for the ice center, so...
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mansfield. All right. So a yes vote is to refer this to, back to planning, and no vote is to continue debate.
Motion to defer is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. Anyone not voting, anyone wish to change your vote? With five affirmative votes, motion to defer fails to carry.
Okay. Back on the main motion, Mr. Taylor.
Yeah, I won't repeat what he said, because I know y'all don't like when I do that, but, you know, something that, that was said tonight, that, and I've looked into this and kind of followed it, because I've got a lot of emails, a lot of people for the ice, ice rink, and I could, you know, I could see that. But if it was such a great business venture, I think there would already be one somewhere in our area already. I really do. And I don't think that they would need the, the TIF or all the other stuff that comes with the ice rink to pay for it. So that, that's just my opinion, from what I've looked at in different areas, who's had these where they closed down. So that's, like I said, sports, a lot of sports are declining because these sportspeople stick their nose in where they ought not and just play their sports and leave the politics at home. But the other thing is that area, I've done a lot of work out in that area. There's a, there's a hidden jewel in that area, and that's the Avondale Access. That's a boat ramp for the Army Corps of Engineers. It's, it's a beautiful place. It, I mean, it's a, it's a benefit to our county that I see being destroyed by this. I really do. The road getting down there to it is like what I call one of them one-lane roads. There's been some development going down to it on the left as you go in, little bit on the right, but there's some more land there that's not developed, that the Army Corps doesn't own. So that, that's just, you know, you hate to lose those hidden treasures, and I stumbled upon it just from out making sales calls and stuff. So I've ate my lunch here several times, just because it's, hey, it's on the water. It's at the lake, you know? So that, that concerns me with this area. The school, like was mentioned previously, we're, the high-density development that will come along with this, I know we're voting on the, the PUD, but we're voting to change this. This is the prelude to what, everything else that comes. If this doesn't pass, none of the other stuff comes. So Jack Anderson Elementary, I've always liked this, I like all the elementary schools, but they always send me a pretty Christmas card. So I got to look out for those people. But that, you know, being over 90-something percent capacity, not this school year, but last school year, I'm guessing they're probably up around 100. Any idea, Mr. Chairman?
It's probably about the same. COVID's affected enrollment.
So when can we get, going forward, that on a bi-yearly basis?
I would, I would say on the fall, well, a much better number.
Okay. But that's just what, you know, I'm tired of going to my citizens and everybody else going to their citizens and asking for more money in tax increases, more money in debt, because this affects everybody. Yeah, and ice rink, there's probably some kids in Westmoreland that want to, want to skate. I know there's some around Portland and different places, and I'm all for giving people opportunities to do things that others never have had in the county, but I'm not going to, you know, I can't support putting on the bias of the citizens that pay the taxes, that, that will be asked to fund this in either more debt, more taxes, for more schools.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Commissioner Becker.
All right. Thank you. I have a few questions. First one is surrounds the Shoot Lane corridor. I know Mr. Suddeth sent an email last Thursday, I think it was, around the 6th. I'm not quite sure I understand. So this, the attachment in that email had, you know, diagrams from, I guess, that were provided by the developer for the project, with the recommendation to widen a three-lane cross-section along the portion. And I'm curious, it doesn't really say, who, who would be funding that? What entity would be funding the widening of Shoot Lane? That's one question.
Mr. Holt, do you have an answer for that?
I do, Mr. Chairman. That would be the developer, and that was a traffic study that was required by our planning department and approved by the Planning Commission. We have three commissioners here tonight that has been appointed to the Planning Commission. Let me, let me say this to you. Tonight, the city of Gallatin has already approved the commercialization and...
Hang on, Mr. Holt, Mr. Hinton's having an issue.
He's getting a lot of text messages.
Go ahead, Mr. Holt, sorry.
Sorry, Mr. Hinton. But the city of Gallatin has already approved of what they've approved. That's separate from what the county's doing. There is no residential in what you're considering tonight, and everything across the road is within the jurisdiction of the city of Hendersonville. And whatever, if the city of Hendersonville is against density or residential or high-density, then it would be up to them to decide what was appropriate for that side of the road. Also, I want to make you aware of this, and I don't know that any of you really know this, but you've got two factors here. You've got Mr. Kane, which is the developer, and Mr. Smith, the Smith family, that is the property owners. I have addressed the situation about our schools with the Smith family. And because of the TIF and because of the request for rezoning, they are donating, they're surveying it right now, they're donating three acres that will be attached to Jack Anderson. So real value for the taxpayers. In that three acres, you're right, Mr. Chairman, that school is now at capacity. If we have to add on or need to add on, that three acres will be invaluable to the county, a very expensive piece of property. Also, let me say this to you, and I'll stop on this note. I think it's very important that we look at tourism as we continue to grow. Sumner County is not going to stop growing. People are moving here, they're voting with their feet, and they're moving here in a rapid rate. We need something to fund public services, whether that's schools, public safety, parks, anything we do. And tourism is the very best way to fund that. These people come in, they spend their money here. Most of these people, this is a family-oriented destination, they're not criminals, they're going to come here, spend their money, and then they're going to leave and not impact services. So remember that. This is probably one of the most desirable requests that I've seen in a very long time. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Holt, just to clarify from Mr. Becker's question, the developer will be responsible for widening chute lane, doing the improvements to chute lane.
Okay, okay, thank you, Mr. Holt. And then within Mr. Suddeth's email, he says, he suggests, in order for these improvements to be required by staff, and I'm not sure whose staff is there, when the project goes to construction, any county commission approval of the goat farm PUD rezoning request would need to be conditional upon these depicted improvements to chute lane being made with phase one of the project. So do we need to take advice here from Mr. Suddeth that somehow add language that the chute lane improvements be done in phase one of the project? Is that what I understand?
If approved...
Hang on, hang on, hang on, Mr. Holt, hang on.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Point of order, Mr. Taylor.
That interrupts the speaker. Is that a...
No, hang on. Mr. Becker asked a question. I'm resolving who to answer. The law director started answering, Mr. Holt stood up. Go ahead, Mr. Holt.
If this is approved by the county commission, this will have to go back to the planning commission. That final approval again, Mr. Becker. That's the way this is set up. So if the zoning is reapproved tonight, this has to go back for the final plan before construction can start.
Okay.
So my understanding is they have to present a site plan to zoning, and that will come back through.
Okay, so I guess I'm not, is Mr. Suddeth here that can...
He's not here tonight.
I don't really understand what his note says that county commission approval would need to be included, be conditioned upon the chute lane being made, being done in phase one.
So I think, Mr. Becker, Ms. Dinnon can correct me if I'm wrong, I think what that means is, is what we do tonight is consider the merits of the rezoning, then it goes back to planning. When they're ready, they bring forth the site plan. I think that's when the conditional things that were recommended in planning have to be done for them. Is that right, Ms. Dinnon?
That's correct. However, if it would make you feel better, I would recommend that you add to your motion that any points presented in the application tonight would be part of that plan, it would go back to the planning commission and would be necessary for final approval by the planning commission.
So I'll say that. I'll make an amendment for what she said.
Mr. Becker makes it a motion of what Ms. Dinnon said, which I believe was this, let me clarify, is that the language that's included, Ms. Dinnon, say what I'm trying to say here, please.
The language included in the application, which has the chutes lane, there's several, let me turn my microphone.
You're on, you're on.
Okay, there's several pieces here that Mr. Suddeth had presented for issues. One of them is that the new traffic study would be part of the adoption, and that would be part of the application and would be included, and that if approved, anything that was presented tonight as part of the application would have to come back through the planning commission for that final approval.
Okay, which would include, and let's add this language, which would include the suggestions for phase one.
For phase one and anything else, now...
Yeah, I've got a couple more, but I'm going to go ahead and make that amendment that it be...
Okay, a motion, an amendment offered by Commissioner Becker, seconded by Commissioner Goode. We have a number of people in the queue. I'm going to ask you if you'd like to speak on the amendment, if you want to stay on the main motion. Michelle.
Main motion.
Mr. Hinton.
Main motion.
Okay, Mr. Wright.
Main motion.
Okay, Mr. Taylor, Kristo, okay, Mr. Mansfield.
Main motion.
Okay, all right, so the amendment is to include in the zoning change that the recommendations that Ms. Dinnon read will be included when it goes back to planning and must be included when it comes back for final approval. All right, there's no one in the queue, let's vote.
The amendment is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. All 23 votes entered, does anyone wish to change your vote? It is unanimously approved.
All right, we're going to go back to Mr. Becker.
All right, all right, thank you for that. So that's, so the chute lane improvement need to be included in phase one is one thing. I would also, and I don't know how we do this, but the buffer zone, to me, sounds like needs to be at the 35 foot, so I don't know if this is something that, how do I include that in what we pass forward?
Well, I think, Mr. Becker, our current zoning rules, I asked the law director when that came up in public comments, the rule is a 35-foot buffer zone unless you put a wall. If you put a wall in, it's 19 to 20 feet. So the 19 feet plus a wall meets our current zoning regulations. Mr. Taylor, is that correct?
Yes, sir. It's also the quality of the wall. Jerry, when they presented to us, one of the things they stressed was it was at certain points it would be a 20-foot wall, so that way it ensured the privacy of the hunt club behind it, rather than have the, with the roadway kind of getting closer to their plotlines. The idea was that that tall wall would kind of stop sound, some of the debris or any kind of obstruction, so to speak, that would come from an extended roadway. And that was actually part of what we said in the planning commission that day, too. So it's included in your amendment already.
Okay, and then...
Yes, and in fact, the wall was going to be large enough that it was going to be part of a walkway for around that exterior of the hunt club, so...
Hang on, hang on, one second, one second. Okay, thank you, Mr. Taylor. Ms. Dinnon?
And then one other point, the pedestrian access through the fire gate, that is something that can be further discussed with the plan that will be presented to the planning commission. That's, if this is approved tonight, that's not a, that's something that can be changed.
Okay, because that was my third point, is on the access road, and I don't necessarily understand and visualize, so thank you. I don't know if I can visualize what a pedestrian path through an access road, what that even looks like, but, you know, if a road is not needed for emergency purposes...
Well, no, it will be there for emergency purposes.
Hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on. Mr. Becker, can she answer your question? Is that acceptable?
Yeah, I don't know who has, who's expert at knowing if a road is needed or not for emergency purposes, but...
The planning commission had already made that based on fire and emergency services, and it will be, there's several of them in Hendersonville, you may not even know they're there, but there's like little, it looks green, but it's got some sort of surface under it that they can drive across, and sometimes there's even gates that pop down that you'd come across. And I don't know specifically what that's going to be.
So this road will be a green, like, it will, okay, well, that, so it's not an earlier...
Right, it's a stub, but emergency traffic could cross the stub.
Okay, okay, so that will be discussed further, it sounds like, as well in planning. And then my last point was, I think Mr. Holt just mentioned about the city of Hendersonville gets to decide on the housing piece, is that right? Does that, do I understand that right?
Well, that's...
Hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on. All right, Ms. Dinnon, go ahead.
All that has been considered so far is the Gallatin piece and the county piece. I don't know what Hendersonville's plans are in this. I don't have any knowledge of what they're...
But am I correct in understanding that the residential portion of this development is the city of Hendersonville's jurisdiction?
I don't think so, no.
No, hang on, hang on. I'm going to bring this back to order. Everybody sit down. All right, what we are considering tonight is the county portion. The city of Gallatin has already approved the residential, commercial on their side of the property line. We have no indication of what this, no formal indication what the city of Hendersonville is going to do, and I think that would take us outside the purview of what we're here to do tonight, because there's nothing that's been, as far as I know, Mr. Holt, there's nothing that's been introduced in the city of Hendersonville.
There may be some land, but...
There may be land for sale, but there's nothing that's come before Hendersonville in terms of a plan.
Okay, so without really understanding what the final development looks like, help me understand, taking a step back, what are we, what's under our jurisdiction and what's outside of our jurisdiction?
The hockey rink or the ice rink, and there's a small piece of commercial property. It's the 28.6 acres. There's the hockey rink, and then there's a commercial part. My understanding is the consideration there is a hotel and then some other commercial, no, I'm sorry, Mr. Holt, can you, okay, all right, I'm going to let Mr. Holt answer that.
If you look at our portion, am I on...
Yes, don't touch it. You're on.
You're on. Mr. Holt, don't touch it.
No. Don't touch it, you're on.
Okay, anyway, if you look at our portion, and you faced it, it's ice hockey ring in the center, and on the left-hand side, there's a commercial out parcel, on the right-hand side, there's a commercial out parcel, and that's it. And in the hotel and all the major commercial components with residential, I think their condos is all on the Gallatin side, from the left-hand side going to Nashville Park. Our property ends around the bend on the right-hand side. Does that make sense, Commissioner?
Not really, but I don't want to hold up the...
Well, there's an ice hockey ring, and then there's a commercial building planned and a commercial building planned here. And you can look, Mr. Commend, if you'll hold it up, you can see it.
That's fine.
All right.
Okay, so, so then going back, so the main portion of the residential section of the development is or is not within the city of Hendersonville's...
No, there's not, I confirmed with Mr., hang on, everybody stop, let me talk, please. I confirmed with Mr. Suddeth that there is nothing currently planned. The city of Hendersonville has no part of this development process right now.
Ice rink.
Hendersonville, Mr. Becker, Mr. Suddeth confirmed that Hendersonville has no part in this plan at this time. Hendersonville has nothing in this plan right now. So it would take a farm or something on the Hendersonville side to have to come forward for zoning and go through the city of Hendersonville, but there's nothing on the dockets right now in Hendersonville.
Okay, thank you. I may have some additional questions, but I'll yield the floor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Becker. Michelle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to kind of address a few, a couple things that were mentioned tonight. And one was a question of since when does a hockey rink need all this additional pieces to go with it? Why can't it stand on its own? And as most...
Yes.
That's not what I said. I said, why does an ice hockey ring need residential? That was what I said.
Okay, all right, we'll let her finish, and if you'd like to respond, you can. I don't think she's...
I'm paraphrasing.
Okay, all right, we'll take your correction into account. Thank you, Mr. Mansfield. Go ahead, Michelle.
The way I interpreted it was why can't the ice hockey rink be on its own without the additional pieces? And so, as most of you know, I have four children, and we play a lot of travel sports, and we travel all over the country, from anywhere, from cheer to basketball to football to baseball to swim to track. Haven't had a kid that's played hockey yet, but a lot of times swim will coincide with hockey, so I've been in some of those facilities. And I can tell you without a doubt, our favorite venues to go to are those where we can basically stay and play. We stay at the hotel, we play our sport, we walk to get dinner so that we don't have to get our cars out because we're not familiar with the city. It's all right there encompassed. So I think that that's a big selling point when we want to try to attract people to come in and spend their dollars in our county. It's also been mentioned, you know, kind of why this location, and oftentimes, in the beginning, planning for something that is, it changes the character or maybe changes the atmosphere of the area, it doesn't seem like it's a good idea at the beginning. There are multiple, multiple buildings across our county that would fit into that mold. Beach High School was one of them. Why on earth would you put Beach High School where it is? It's a beautiful place. Beach High School definitely, it is a great location for the high school. Station Camp Schools are another one. The Glenbrook Shopping Area in Hendersonville, why are we putting this shopping center here? Now we know that that's a staple to most of us. And so I think we have to be able to look forward and to be able to plan. I was recently asked a question, being interviewed, what I enjoyed most about serving on this commission. And without a doubt, I was able to say that this commission, more than any other commission that I have watched or followed, has had the ability to plan for the future. And I am very proud to be a part of that, and I commend you for being a part of that. We have the ability to look into the future and say, what can we do to leave this county better than when we got on here to serve? And we have done multiple projects in which we have partnered with the cities, with the schools, with different people, some we didn't have to partner with. The courthouse is a perfect example. It's county property. But we partnered with the city of Gallatin, and we met with the city officials because we want to be a good partner. When I ran to serve, one of the things I ran on was I wanted to bridge gaps, because before I was elected, this body did not work well with other bodies. For whoever's fault that was, I don't know, I don't care. But the bodies of this county did not work well together, and that is something that we can pride ourselves on. We have worked well with the cities. In a county our size to have as many cities as it has, it is a difficult task to be able to all work together to do what's best for the citizens of this county. And that is what a project like this is. It is the collaboration of all these different entities coming together and working together to present a plan that will be a legacy for this county. It will change the footprint of this county, and it will bring the tax dollars in that we want, where they come, they stay, they play, they spend their money, and then they go back home, and we're not responsible for educating them. So I would just challenge this commission to continue to have the foresight that we have had in the past, to be able to plan. Leaders don't make easy decisions. They're not always the most popular decisions when they're made. But when you look back at it in 10, in 20 years, what are people going to say about the legacy projects that this commission has put forth? And I think this is one of those projects that our grandkids are going to look back on and say, hey, my grandmother was a part of that, or my grandfather was a part of that when they brought that in, and we're still playing hockey, and now it's expanded to basketball and who knows what else. So I would just challenge you to make sure that when you're voting on this, that you are looking at the legacy that you're leaving from a commission, and what do you want that to be? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. Mr. Hinton?
Progress always bothers some of us. It's just the nature of the beast. But, and I understand why these people are living in a subdivision or whatever you want to call it, and we've got one egress access, and now there might be a second. Now, I'd like to have an answer to the question that this second, this second gate that's going in there is not open unless there's an emergency. Is that, that's a lockdown... That's a lockdown, still a lockdown situation, no traffic through it.
That's correct. It's fire and EMS access only.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hinton. Mr. Wright.
I've heard from citizens tonight, I've heard from supporters of hockey. Is there anyone here with the developer? Is there a representative?
There is.
Would you like to answer some questions?
Mr. Wright, do you have some specific questions for him?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Without objection, we'll let the developer come and speak. You can go to that microphone right there, sir. And if you will, state your name for the minutes. Yeah, you're ready. You're good.
You're good.
Hang on one second. Without objection. No objections. Okay. Go ahead.
Kevin Kane with Strass Development.
Thank you. Any idea how many vehicles this is going to... The traffic flow? Has that study been done?
Can I call John Sexton up? Yes, we have studied it intensively. We've done numerous traffic studies. In terms of the numbers of cars that we would be adding, is that the question? John, do we have hard numbers on what that traffic count is off the top of our head?
Here, come on. You have to come up to the microphone.
Out of objection, can we just ask his team to come up just in case there's different places?
That's fine. If we can have the team come up, yes.
I think he and I can handle the bulk of it.
Can everybody hear me? I don't have the hard numbers on me right now.
That's fine. Just ballpark.
I want to say off the top of my head that we're adding about 50,000, you know, vehicles, but I can't remember what that timeframe was. I think that we can get those numbers to you. I don't have them off the top of my head because I didn't expect that as a question. I think one thing that we do want to point out as it comes to traffic is that Shoot Lane is obviously one of the main conversations that's taking place. I want to point out that Shoot Lane is not the main road that services the development. Shoot Lane runs adjacent to the main road that runs through development. That road is designed to carry the influx of vehicular motion that we would be producing through the development. So while we are augmenting Shoot Lane as it exists today, bringing it up to some current standards and improving it so that the access in and out of the elementary school can be improved, and while there is an access from the west side of the development from Shoot Lane, that access is not meant to serve as the primary access. We would be flowing traffic to Nashville Pike, which would come in to the south from the north end off of Nashville Pike at a signalized intersection. And so, our calculations are based on that information, and the creation of that road is meant to carry that influx, which is above and beyond what it is today.
All right. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Wright, any other questions for them?
No.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Wright. Thank you. All right, Mr. Commendon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to start by saying we have an excellent planning commission, and we have an excellent planning director. And we have been through this, every bit of this, at least twice. There has been concerns... We had concerns. We had several concerns. We listed the concerns. This developer addressed all the concerns. They did a very extensive traffic study, and they answered all the questions that the planning commission had to have... That they did have. And I do want you to know that each phase of this will go back before the planning commission. And I also want you to know that all of you are invited to come to the planning commission meetings, and then you can hear all of this. And, you know, we've already heard it two, three, four times. And then also, on the tourism side of it, our tourism director, Barry Young, he has... We have bass tournaments, we have softball tournaments, we have music events, we have golf tournaments, and some of the... Just the baseball, I mean, the softball tournaments brings in thousands of people to Sumner County. There's like 100 teams that come and stay a whole week, and I'm sure the hockey will be the same way. So as the resolution states, the planning commission sends a positive recommendation to the county commission, and also tourism recommends this venue also. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Commendon. I wanted to clarify too, Mr. Wright, with your question about traffic. Mr. Becker's motion or amendment includes consideration... Further consideration of the traffic plan to be included in the final recommendation that comes back as well. Wanted to include that as well. Mr. Ring.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Couple of things. Citizens who spoke had some concerns about several things that apparently will be included in the motion that we made to... Or the amendment we made to send back to planning. But one of the things that was mentioned by a citizen was hotels. I know that's not here. In our purview, that's part of the city, but I just wanted to point out that as another member of the Tourism Board Commission, that we don't have enough hotels in Sumner County. We may think we do, and we don't. They average 70, 80% occupancy. And if you are planning a large event on a weekend, people have to stay other places because we don't have enough space. So this hotel will be used, I'm sure, probably full most of the time. Again, as has been said before, tourism dollars are basically free dollars for us. We are not putting this development in. This is being developed by a private developer. We're not putting... We're not spending money on it. All of the revenue that comes in from this, from tourism, will be coming to Sumner County. People come to Sumner County to buy... When they come here, they buy gas, they buy food, hotel space. All of that comes back into Sumner County. When people come to Sumner County as tourists and leave without needing schools or things like that, it brings tax revenue, which helps to alleviate taxes that the citizens of Sumner County have to pay. So the more money we bring in in tourism from the sales tax dollars, the more money we have to spend for the services that are vital for the citizens of Sumner County. So I think that, as it's been stated, in our part of it, basically, it's the hockey rink and the some commercial. We're not talking about any residential. If we don't vote for this, if we vote this down, they're still... They could still have commercial development on the Gallatin portion of it. So this has no real effect on that, as far as I can tell. So I do support this project and as for it to be approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ring. Mr. Rhodes, you've not spoken yet.
Yeah, I'd like to call a question.
Okay. Mr. Rhodes has called the question. All right, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All right. There's no debate on calling the question. A yes vote is to end debate and to vote on the motion as amended by Mr. Becker. Give me one second to get it set up.
Mr. Chairman, is there anyone in the queue that hasn't had an opportunity to speak?
No, everyone in the queue has spoken.
Thank you.
Yes.
We're having... Thank you. We've got people back here hollering out stuff, different things. I just asked them, which I guess I was out of order. If they have something to say, they need to say it to the chairman, not to be hollered out inside us.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Driver. I'd remind everyone to remember that. Let's cut down on the cross-chamber talk and direct all comments through the chair. Thank you, Mr. Driver. All right. I think we're ready, Mr. Kemp. A yes vote is to end debate and to vote on the main motion as amended. A no vote is to continue discussion. It does require a two-thirds majority, 16 votes.
Call for questions on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. All 23 votes are entered. Does anyone wish to change your vote? With 18 affirmative votes, question is approved. Back on the main motion as amended.
All right. So let me clarify, and then we'll go to vote. The motion was as amended by Mr. Becker. It includes the zoning change resolution plus the recommendation that was added by Mr. Suddeth, as described by Ms. Denning, to be included before it comes back for a final site plan approval. Okay. All right. Question has been called. There is no debate. Let's vote.
Resolution is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. With 18 affirmative votes, resolution is approved.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kemp. All right. We will move on now to our approval of the... Whoa. To our approval of consent agenda items. Is there a motion to approve our consent agenda?
No.
Motion made by Michelle, second by Mr. Commendon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Your written reports are in... You have access to your written reports. Notaries? We'll move on to our notaries. Is there a motion to approve our notaries?
Sure.
Motion made by Commissioner Chris Taylor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kruger. Let's vote.
Notary applications on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. All 23 votes are entered. Does anyone wish to change your vote?
The Harlem Globetrotters of motions wins again. Notaries remain undefeated. All right. Committee on Committees, Mr. Goode.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Many of the committees break their checks given the need of a law.
One issue on the agenda that Matt Stamper had resigned from the Board of Zoning Appeals. County mayor recommended Jim Harrison. I so move. It was unanimous.
Motion made by Commissioner Goode, seconded by Commissioner DeWitt. Commissioner Mo Taylor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I... When the previous mentioned member was appointed to this committee, there was another one with him, and I questioned the representation of the body for the whole county, if you I don't see that here with this recommendation. So I'm going to move that we defer this back to the Committee on Committees for further consideration.
Okay. Motion to defer, seconded by Commissioner Mansfield. That would require a majority vote to send back to Committee on Committees. A yes vote is to send it back to committee, and no vote is to continue debate on the main motion.
Motion to defer is on the board. Commissioner, please record your vote. Anyone not voting, wish to vote, anyone wish to change your vote? With four affirmative votes, motion to defer fails to carry.
Okay. Mr. Goode? Oh, I'm sorry. We've got a motion seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. We'll let the record reflect. I have Commissioner Mo Taylor and Commissioner Jeremy Mansfield voting no. Anyone else wish to vote no? Anyone wish to abstain? Okay. By a vote of 21 to 2, I have the motion passing. Mr. Goode.
That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Education, Mr. Sullivan.
No formal report.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Emergency Services, Mr. Driver.
No report.
Okay. Thank you, Mr....
One other question.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
On the agenda for the emergency services, May 10, there was a request to waive radio maintenance fees for $39,000 for all volunteer fire departments under the law director's report. Could you please explain what happened with that?
All right. Go ahead, Ms. Taylor.
It went to budget.
It's on budget. Sorry, Mr. Kemp. It went to budget. We discussed it in the budget workshop, and the feeling was that they were afforded additional monies right now, and they could use that to pay for the radio fees, because at this time, we're making everybody else pay it. So what was the additional... You're saying they're getting additional money that they didn't get last year? Is that what you're saying?
Not from us, Mr. Mansfield, from all the different money streams that are coming in from federal, right? Is that...
Yep. Actually, what it is, Jeremy, when we did the tax rate, I apologize, addressing, we did the tax rate, we included the 24,000 for each one, but then there's also an additional 132,000, 138,000 each year for them. And what they do is they get together as a group and decide how they're going to spend that. They have their own priorities and work it amongst themselves. It's then approved by the EMS committee and our emergency service committee, then it comes to us. This year, we've just explained that they probably need to pull some of that money. It's about 34,000 out of that additional 133,000 they've got, so.
Good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mansfield. All right. Anything else for emergency services? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Driver. General Ops, Michelle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
There you go.
Thanks. No official report. General Ops has been quiet lately, but did just want to make sure that everybody remembers tomorrow is your opportunity. If you would like to come and tour the new jail pods, be inside of those jail pods on the right side of the law, tomorrow is your day. We're going to have a ribbon cutting, and that will be at 11 o'clock at the Sumner County Jail. So I would invite everybody to come and tour that and get to see where those dollars were spent. So it's a beautiful project.
Okay. Thank you, Michelle. Highway Committee, Mr. Hinton.
We've had a little extra money coming in, but we've had a lot of increase in asphalt prices, so don't get too carried away. We do have a couple of projects going, one for the sheriff department, one for the school system, and so that's... But that's money going to make it in. It don't cost the road department any. That money is paid back from those departments. But the budget is in place, and there is a plan for bridges, and there is a plan for the list of roads that's going to be worked this coming year. So if you're interested and curious, we can call the road superintendent, and she'll be glad to cover that with you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hinton. Financial Management, Mr. Becker.
No report.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Becker. Legislative Committee, Mr. Ring.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item on the agenda is 2105-02, a resolution authorizing application for designation as a voting center county, and I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Ring, seconded by Commissioner Schell. Mr. Hyde.
Mr. Chairman, as a result of the Republican Party and about half the country are concerned about corruption with recent voting, having to do with a lot of convenience-type voting, I have a couple of questions I'd like to ask, if that's all right.
Yeah, without objection, I presume you wanted to ask Ms. Ashley?
Sure.
Okay.
Unless you know. Unless you know.
Since she's standing there, I think she's the best one to answer. Go ahead, Ms. Hyde.
Yes, sir.
First of all, where did the money for this become available? Is it federal, is it state through, through money obtained from federal government?
Actually, no. Sumner County will have to pay for the funds to do this. However, because it's a redistricting year, when we send out the notices, which were required by law to do for your new voting location, it will piggyback on top of that, so it will be a very minimal cost to the taxpayers.
How much do you project?
We projected $107,000, but about 90,000 of that was going to be, we have to spend anyway, to notify voters where their new precinct will be with redistricting.
So there are no funds whatsoever?
There may be.
From the federal government?
We just don't know at this point. Everything we do, just like it's always been, we pay upfront, and then you guys get it back, and we don't always know what that's going to be.
Are you, okay, but are you aware of any funds available that you're going to apply for from the federal government to achieve this?
Well, we already got our carers stimulus money. Well, we haven't received it yet, I think is what Bethany told us the other day. That's about 234,000, so there's HAVA dollars, there's other grants we can apply for. We, we just don't know as of today, but it will be a very minimal cost. And everyone in this room is elected, I think, except Ben and Leah. So, you know, we, we vote everybody in the county, and it's something that will help, it will increase voter participation in all of our elections, which Sumner County, unfortunately, is not at the top of the list towards voter participation, and that's something we really want to work to try to increase.
So actually, if this is going to cost between 100 and 200,000, we would need to see a sizable.
No, no, I apologize, Ms. Hyde, if I'd misspoke. We're going to have to send out the redistricting cards no matter what, whether you do convenient vote centers or not, we've got to send those cards. So we're just going to pony on top of this and do, basically get a double dip and send out the information about convenient vote centers with the new cards. So it would be less than 20 to 25,000.
Okay, so we, well, you're saying we'll just have to wait until the next election to see whether we have increased voting participation or not?
No, sir, we know we've, well, two different questions. Our population has increased by about 25% over the last four years, so we're still paying for all of those voters, but we would like to implement it for next year's voting. There were three counties that were approved, Sumner was one of them, Weekly and Monroe through the state legislature this legislative session. So we would go ahead and implement it for 2022.
What will this procedure involve, what will convenient voting involve?
Convenient voting means you can vote anywhere in the county, in Sumner County, if you're a Sumner County resident.
And where will the vote be deposited?
I'm sorry?
Where will the vote be deposited?
It'll be just like early voting. It'll be coming back to our server every single day. Oh, well, on election day, it comes back on early voting now.
So we, we will have personnel manning, personally manning these centers?
It's the same as, as a precinct. You can just go anywhere you want. So if you wanted to go to Merrill Hyde Magnet School, or you wanted to go down the road, you can go vote anywhere you want to. If you go to Indian Lake, which is one of our busiest precincts, sometimes a multiple hour wait, you can go right on down the road to somewhere else in Hendersonville and vote.
And what kind of security will you establish for this vote?
Nothing goes across the lines, other than the same thing you can buy on a CD, your name, your address, the district and ward and so forth in which you vote in, and that's it. There's no social security number or anything like that. There's no data that would potentially lead to some type of fraud with the voter.
Would it be possible for a person to go out and round up a lot of people, as happened in Atlanta, to usher them to a voting poll to vote on a particular day of convenient
Well, I mean, I guess that can happen in any location, state, or so forth and so on, but that's not the purpose of convenient vote centers at all.
Ms. Ashley, I think, if I can interrupt just for a second, Ms. Hyde, if you don't mind, I, I think what he's asking is, is what are the security protocol when someone comes to vote? Is that what you're asking, Mr. Hyde?
Oh, you stole the same thing we have now. You have to present a photo ID, you have to verify your name, address, information, that kind of thing. This is my chairman, Alan Emlyn.
Could I say one thing?
Go ahead.
And maybe this will help you, Mr. Hyde.
Mr. Smith, can you get closer to the microphone so we can hear you?
Convenient vote centers are only for election day. That means on election day, you can vote in any precinct that's open. Early voting and satellite voting in all the cities is still going to happen. That's, that's in essence, convenient vote centers. But election day is, meaning we're opening, will be allowed to open all precincts to all voters who haven't voted.
So, okay.
So if you're coming from Nashville.
That clears up a great deal, but answer me this question. That's, this is not involved in early convenient voting. This is on election day.
This is for election day.
Okay.
We're still going to have the satellite voting, just like we've always had in, in all the cities and everything else.
Okay, how will you know that I am who I say I am when I arrive at the poll, other than my word?
Well, it's the same thing we do now. You have to show photo ID. That's not, that hasn't changed, just like you voted in the last election. This is the same thing this election, but if you're coming from Nashville and you've been stuck in a traffic wreck, and you've got to get to Westmoreland, you can drop off in Hendersonville at 6:30, go to the first precinct you see and vote.
And the final question I have is, did you have any community input in developing this?
It's, it's extremely popular. It's been done in four counties for the past four years, and the voters absolutely love it.
What are those four counties?
Williamson, Rutherford, Wilson, and Monroe.
Okay, all right.
And Monroe's tiny, but the other three are comparable to us in size.
But here in Sumner, has there been any community input or going out into the community to discuss it with clubs or organizations or anything?
We have not done that, I'll answer that, but we've had the negative. You show, you've moved, you show up at your old precinct, and they say, you can't vote here, you've got to go move your address, you've got to go to the other precinct, and maybe they won't make it in time. Now with convenient vote centers, you can change it all right there. And people get mad at us because we can't vote them there, they have to go to their other precinct. So we get yelled at for that. This fixes that problem. If they showed up with their registered voter, and they've moved, and their precinct's changed, they can change their address right there and vote right where they are.
And what was the origin of this? Who requested that this change be made?
It started with the state. We tried it four years ago.
Yep, we were.
And we were approved, but we, as the election commission declined to do it. The county commission approved the resolution, and we declined to do it because by the time all, all the hoops got jumped through, it was too close to an election to implement.
Thank you.
And so they approved us again this year, and so we're starting earlier so we can get it done for 2022.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hyde. Thank you all. Mr. Tinsley.
I have just a couple of questions. I know that redistricting is coming up, and it's already a topic on many people's minds, if you pay attention, on social media and et cetera. Is there, is there a perspective, like we know that we're looking at making this voting precinct? Because I don't think it's going to be every precinct is going to be kind of operating like an early voting precinct. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So it's going to be maybe like two in Hendersonville, two in Gallatin?
No, Hendersonville and Gallatin are our big blocks, so there would probably be four to five in each of those cities.
Okay, so.
Now, we may trim that down after next year. That's what we want to do, per Mr. Hyde's recommendation. We want to make sure we've got plenty open and everybody's taken care of, and then we might be able to revisit that, but we're not going to.
So it's not just going to be kind of an every free-for-all kind of thing?
No, sir.
Okay, so my, my second question is, and I kind of already know the answer for this, but I just wanted to get clarification. When Alan was speaking, he said that you could change your address and everything on, on election day. That's not saying that you can register to vote on election day?
No, that's, you cannot register.
Okay, I just, I wanted, I wanted that clarified and, and kind of out there, that it wasn't.
Yeah, he said you had to be a registered voter. If you've moved and you have to change your precinct, now you have to move to your new precinct to do that, then you can vote now, you could do it, if we have the vote centers, you could do it right there and vote right there and be done.
Okay, that's all my questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Tinsley. Mr. Hyde, I looked up, in answer to your question, you asked the origin of this. The House bill was introduced by Representative Crawford, Alexander, Freeman, Smith, and Hurt. The Senate bill, Senator Briggs, Senator Hale, Senator Jackson, Senator Pody. It passed both the House and the Senate unanimously and was signed by the governor on May 12th. So that's the legislative history on it. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Mo Taylor.
Yeah, the, the, I could see the convenience voting thing, I think it's come for us two times. We voted this down in 2013, if I think I recall that correctly. But the, for my area, having the place to go vote, I think we've gained one voting precinct in the last six years as a county, but we've grown by 20-something thousand or 20-something percent. So we've been increased the voting precinct in the fourth district, fourth, fourth commission district. Of course, that's population-driven, I'd say. Our population is driven, we lost the voting precinct. Some would say, well, you know, this will help those people. Well, some of them, it wouldn't help, because they're not going to go to Gallatin to vote. They're not going to be in Gallatin. They're not going to be in Portland. So it's the distance between the voting precincts in my area, and it's in the third district as well. But my, my hesitation on this is, at the August 2020 state and federal primary and county general election, I'm going through my ballot to vote, and I voted at my normal voting precinct. But when I get to my state representative, I have the wrong state representative on my Knowing, you know, I understand this isn't for the convenience of the elected officials sitting here, this is the convenience of the voters, but, you know, I know who my state referee is. But a lot of people who don't know who their representatives are may just vote. So I could have voted for Terry Lynn Weaver, and she's not even my, my state representative because the wrong district was loaded. That's what worries me on this. So if I'm going down to, to Beach High School and, you know, typically the people that live in the areas work at the precincts. I mean, not 100%, but they'll know you in different things. I'm just concerned with the, the, the accurate, accuracy of the ballots that presented in front of the voters, because I'm a clear example that it can happen. Had I not called the, the supervisor over, who knows me, and I said, look, this is where I live, here's where I vote, you know, this is my state representative, and then they had to go in, and I had to go through and re-vote. Luckily, I didn't hit cast vote, because once I hit cast vote, it's done. Because that brings up another point. In these elections, on election day, you have CD, some people have CDs that have property rights votes. And I think they can vote at the, at their precinct. They used to be able to in Westmoreland.
No, they're, they're all voted absentee.
They used to be able to vote.
It's been 10 years that I'm aware of.
Yeah, you know, your property rights, you didn't have to do absentee. So, but I saw, like I said, the confusion of the ballots and having to load so many different ballots, because next August, you've got all 24 of us, all school board members, I think every, about every judge.
All right, hey, y'all.
Excuse me, half, half of the school board members, I stand corrected. A lot of judges, most county elected officials other than the accessory property, so that's going to be a huge ballot. So I, I'm just, I'm concerned, and I'm not ready to be a guinea pig for something that only a few counties in the states do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Mr. Ring.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As somebody who's been on the election commission, I've been in a precinct at 7:30 at night, or 6:30 at night, excuse me, when somebody is told that, no, you've got to go vote somewhere else, and they said, I can't get there before seven o'clock. Sorry, you have to go vote somewhere else. This would eliminate that. The addition, I teach at Gallatin High School, we've got somewhere in the neighborhood of 200 employees, who, most, many of whom do not live in the Gallatin High School precinct, including me. So they'd have, they have to leave school and go vote if they didn't vote early. This would make it so much more convenient for them and so, and for the people who work or live near any of the other convenience centers. I believe that, you know, we've, we've been operating this, basically the same thing with early voting. If I want to go vote in Westmoreland, early voting day in Westmoreland, or Hendersonville or White House, I can. This is exactly the same thing, except it's on election day. It doesn't change any of that that we've already been doing, except it puts it on election day. So I, I don't see a downside to this at all. They've been doing the early voting for years, they know how to do it. Again, it's the same thing, so I support this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ring. Mr. Becker.
Yeah, I was, what I was about to say, Mr. Commissioner Ring just touched on it. I mean, it's, it's the, it's the same thing we're doing, early voting, and so I, I'm going to support this tonight. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Becker. Mr. Goode.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would almost just say ditto to the last two commissioners. I actually, and my district is the district on the Hendersonville side that touches 386 in the bypass in every election cycle. I've never not worked an election in my 25, 30 years here. Inevitably, every election, there are people that were racing from Nashville to try to get to a precinct, whether it's Indian Lake, whether it's Merrill Hyde, whether it's Beach, and can't make it because of the traffic. So I think this would be a great idea and a big help, so I'm for it too.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Goode. There's no one else in the queue. A yes vote is to approve the resolution, and no vote is to oppose it. Let's vote.
Resolution is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. All 23 votes are entered. Does anyone wish to change your vote? With 20 affirmative votes, resolution is approved.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kemp. Mr. Ring, back to you.
Thank you. Resolution 2105-03, a resolution, a resolution accepting this proposal of the Department of Transportation of the State of Tennessee to the county of Sumner County, SR, State Route 174, Long Hollow Pike, and Upper Station Camp Creek Road, and I so move.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Ring, seconded by Commissioner Schell. Mr. Mansfield.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Apologize, forgot to print out my paper, so I'm going to squint here. I had some questions from a constituent of mine in this area, just about some of the signalization and the, and the road improvements. One question was, does this intersection remain in the county along with homes on Upper Station Camp Creek Road, or is there a plan to annex this intersection into the city of Gallatin? Does anybody know?
This wouldn't have, this wouldn't have anything to do with this resolution. This is with an agreement with T-Dot.
Correct, well, so there are a lot of questions that need to get answered with T-Dot regarding signalization, so.
Right, but T-Dot doesn't have anything to do with annexation.
So, does T-Dot, or do you guys know how many, as far as cars, that's going to be coming out of Lower Station Camp Creek Road across from this? If there's going to be a flashing yellow light to include there, if there are students coming from Lower Station Camp to come to this? As far as traffic in the morning with, for, then when the new school opens up, that was another question that was asked. So does, do you know that answer, or?
I think Mr. Holt's in the queue. Mr. Holt, go ahead.
This is a complicated process when you deal with T-Dot. Signalization requires that on state highways, that T-Dot does traffic study and has to be warranted, has to meet certain criteria. Once it's warranted, it's a long process to get them to get involved. What this is, this is basically T-Dot designing this, engineering it, getting it right away, and constructing it.
So I guess no answer on that. So, well, another question, you know, dealing with traffic studies, has T-Dot studied what the, there's going to happen with lateral lane on the backside of the school?
This doesn't, Mr. Holt, I mean, Mr. Mansfield, this has nothing to do with the school. This is, this is a Long Hollow Pike legislative resolution.
Yeah, I understand, but the reason we're doing this is because we bought a school, so the citizens want to know.
It may be, but the school is not on this resolution.
That's fine, I was just asking about traffic related to it, which is.
Right, I understand, but lateral lane has nothing to do with this resolution.
Okay, so no answer on that? I appreciate it. Thank you.
You're out of order, Mr. Mansfield. I ask you to keep those comments to yourself. Let's vote. Go ahead, Mr. Taylor.
I saw some information that wasn't completely accurate, or it was displayed out in the public, so I want to just make a point of clarification.
Okay.
At the current time, this red light, or I call them red lights.
Yeah, that's not.
This traffic light would be out in the county. The state does not pay to maintain those red lights. Sumner County will have to pay to maintain this red light until it's annexed or taken over by another municipality, because the state of Tennessee doesn't have a streetlight crew that.
Right.
I think our other one's down at the Beach High School, we have a certain amount of money in their budget, the highway budget for signalization.
That's correct.
Upkeep and control, just like all the flashing lights out in the county.
Yeah.
So I just want that pointed out.
Sure, yeah, thank you, Mr. Taylor. Michelle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also just wanted to point out, the red light, I sit at that intersection multiple times a day, and lots of times I have to turn right in order to turn left, because you cannot get out. But it is warranted with a red light there without the impact of the school. So I, I know that's been mentioned, if the school, the school has nothing to do with this. This traffic light is warranted right now without any additional traffic coming from the school. If you don't believe me, go sit out there at the end of it at 5:00. Try to get out.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. All right, no one else is in the queue, let's vote.
Resolution is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote.
Okay.
All 23 votes are entered. Does anyone wish to change your vote? It is unanimous, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I encourage everybody to keep the chatter down as we're voting, and we'll go to.
Mr. Chairman, may I, may I make a comment, please, from the legislative?
Oh, sure, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Ring.
Yeah, we had, at our committee meeting, we had several rules changes proposed, and we decided that over the next. that over the next, we're going to look over them in this next 60 to 90 days, and that if anyone has a rules change that they would like proposed, they need to submit those to Ms. Denon, please, and we'll take a look. We'll have a special legislative call, legislative committee meeting to look at those in the future. So I just want to make you sure you know that if you do have a rules change you'd like to make, because there are a number of rules changes that are coming down from the County Commission Association and County Mayor's Association that we need to look at as well. So pass those on to Ms. Denon. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ring. Commissioner Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Kemp. 2105-04, authorizing a transfer of $500,000 from general purpose school fund to federal projects fund. I so move. It's passed through.
Motion made by Commissioner Chris Taylor, second by Commissioner Foster. I see no one in the queue. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Taylor.
2105-05, appropriating $52,481.81 to pass through funds for state inmate medical reimbursement to the budget of the Sumner County Sheriff's Office. I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Taylor, second by Commissioner Foster. I see no one in the queue. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Taylor.
2105-06, appropriating $69,058 from the 2019 Homeland Security Grant for the Emergency Management Agency. I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Taylor, second by Commissioner Stewart. See no one in the queue? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Commissioner Taylor.
2105-07, appropriating $112,038 from the 2020 Homeland Security Grant for the Emergency Management Agency. I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Taylor, second by Commissioner Foster. See no one in the queue? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Taylor.
2105-21, this is appropriating money for the Sumner County Summer Camp Program. I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Taylor, second by Commissioner Goode. Let me, let me explain. I know this was a special call meeting. Let me give you a little bit of the origin of that. So in the special call legislative session, end of January, first part of February, the legislative, legislature, state of Tennessee allocated money for learning camps. Now, as is always the case, there's a lot of initials and a lot of names for these. Summer learning camps is for K5. There's a stream, science, technology, engineering, arts, math, recess, something like that. A lot of letters there. And then there's a middle school camp. So basically, we had to run a 30-day registration window. There are a lot of other side pieces. We couldn't order supplies and things like that until we knew the number of our kids. Because of that, we missed the regular cycle, so to avoid audit finding and to keep everything